Hello, everyone, and welcome to the September 13th Decatur School Board District Two Forum. I'm your host, Decaturish Editor and Publisher Dan Wizzenhund. Our candidates are District Two, for our candidates for District Two, excuse me, are Carmen Sultan. Dr. Sultan, how are you today?
I'm good. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
And Dan Baskerville, Dan, how are you today, sir?
Very well, thank you.
I want to remind everyone here that the election is going to be November 2nd, and early voting is going to start on October 12th. You can find all of our coverage about the local elections in Decatur at decaturishvotes.com. And if you like, if you like what we're doing with these forums, please consider becoming a financial supporter by visiting supportmylocalnews.com. And there's going to be a link actually in the other direction on our Twitch channel. Each candidate is going to have three minutes to make an opening statement, and they're going to have three minutes to answer each question. And if we need to, we might allocate a minute or two for response if that is something the candidates like to do. So we're going to start with Carmen Sultan, and then we're going to start with, then we're going to do an opening statement by Dan Baskerville. So Carmen, three minutes.
All right, thank you. I want to start out by thanking Decaturish and the voters for spending some time with us this afternoon. I appreciate your time and attention. My name is Dr. Carmen Sultan. I am a resident of the Wynona Park area in the City Schools of Decatur. My husband Okira and I live over in Wynona Park with our three girls. We have three kids in the system. I have two that are at the high school, one who's a senior, one who is a freshman, and also a fourth grader at Tally Street. In addition to that, I have lived in Atlanta my entire life. I am a native of DeKalb County. I went to DeKalb County Schools. I went to Emory University for undergrad. My family still lives here in DeKalb County. My mother is a local pediatrician. My dad is an engineer, and they live right up the street. So we have been invested in the community for quite some time. I'm happy to share a couple of my top platform points that I'm sure we'll go over. The first one is that I'm very excited to have the opportunity to serve the district. I'm interested in making sure that our kids get the fair and equitable education that they need. I think everyone deserves that. And I'm happy to work closely with the school board to make sure that our kids get exactly what they need, regardless of their, the way that they learn, their style of learning, regardless of their socioeconomic status or where they live. In addition to that, I am very interested in making sure that we have transparency in our district. I think that our leaders should be held accountable to the decisions they make and how they vote. I'm interested in making sure that we work together to make sure that our citizens and our voters and our taxpayers are confident in our leaders and get all of the information that they need to the best extent possible. I am free of all biases and conflicts. I'm here to work with families and serve them. I am a pediatrician by training, and then I did a fellowship in emergency medicine. I work in the emergency department at Children's Healthcare of Atlanta. So every day, I serve parents, I serve kids, I serve families, I listen to their needs, and I'm here to work with them to get them what they want. I think this is what sets me apart. Again, I'm happy to be here. I appreciate your time and the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Baskerville, opening statement, three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. First, I would like to thank Decaturish for hosting this forum. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Sultan for putting her hat in the ring to run for public office. I believe the more qualified candidates that can engage in thoughtful public dialogue, the better. I would also like to say hello to my wife and son. My son, who is not necessarily interested in watching this until he found out I was going to be on Twitch, so that excited him. And my mother, who had a 28-year career in teaching and helped inspire me to advocate for those with the greatest obstacles to an equitable education. And hopefully, she has figured out how to use Twitch and get on tonight's forum. And my name is Dan Baskerville, and I am running for the District Two seat for Decatur School Board to ensure the system is focused on its highest priority, our students. Both those points may seem obvious, but I'm emphasizing them because I want to be clear that I'm not running to run against Dr. Sultan, but rather for the District Two seat. And we can know, never overemphasize that the priority in every decision made by the school system needs to be in the best interest of our students. Running for office is actually something that I have considered for many years. In fact, I strongly considered running for this seat four years ago. Much of that consideration was based on my experience as being involved in the school community, primarily in my role as co-president of the Oakhurst PTA and the Fave PTO for four straight years, respectively. However, I chose to stay on the ground in my role with the PTO at Fave, rather than run for the board at that time four years ago. After many conversations over the past couple of months with people I respect and who are in the weeds on the issues most important to the district, I decided I could best advance the ball on these important issues by running for and being elected to the school board. What it boils down to for me is I want to work toward an inclusive school environment that provides dignity, respect, and an opportunity to succeed for all of our children. I know of many families whose children's needs are not being met, while some are able to leave CSD for private school or pay out of pocket for services such as after-school tutoring. That is simply not an option for many other families with fewer resources. Neither making families feel like they need to leave the district or leaving children behind is acceptable. I also want to foster a sense of respect and civility among our community in the conversations about our schools. The tone of the conversation has often been toxic and divisive, particularly on social media. As a member of the school board, I will view my role as a listening one, not a commanding one. I will do my best to take in all perspectives on the issues that divide us. I will seek to offer clear, timely communication to the community to curb speculation that could become divisive in the absence of a clear message. I look forward to talking about these and other important issues tonight with the voters who are watching this out there tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baskerville. So we're going to start our Q and A portion of the meeting. If you have a question, go ahead and create yourself a Twitch account, jump in the comments and ask away, and we will try to get to them tonight, as many as we can. I want to start the Q and A with Mr. Baskerville since Ms. Sultan started our, with the closing, opening statements. Mr. Baskerville, can you tell us what you do for a living, what your day job is, and how that will help you in your role as a school board member if you are elected?
Yeah, so my day job is I work for a law firm called Denton's. It, years ago, was called Long Aldridge and Norman, then McKenna, Long and Aldridge, and we merged with Denton's, which is an international law firm back in 2015. So I've worked in the government affairs practice here for 20 years now. And what I do is I do a little federal, but mostly state and local government affairs work. I represent a variety of different clients at the state legislature. I think people who follow this a little bit know that I've represented DeKalb County Schools in the past. And, but I represent all sorts of different clients. I represent people in the healthcare side. I represent Northside Hospital there. We represented the ADL, working on the hate crimes law a couple of years ago, helped lead lobbyists on getting that passed. So a variety of clients, whether they be corporate, or we represent some local government clients too. That's what I do a lot of the time at the General Assembly when they're in session. And I also do local work on zoning issues, mostly in the city of Atlanta. But I feel like these are attributes that will help in my role if I get on the school board. I understand policy. I understand education policy. And I think I will be able to help the system have a better relationship with the DeKalb County School Board, which actually happened this session on the annexation legislation they both worked on. I think that my relationship at the General Assembly will help us with the, with the DeKalb County House and Senate delegations, especially with issues like redistricting coming up. And I also can help a little bit on the federal level. I'm good at identifying grants. I'm good at figuring out the American Rescue Plan, how to get funds for the district. So I just, I think the skills that I have gotten in my, in my job will help me represent city of Decatur schools. And also, I've learned really how to work with different parties. You know, people had disagreed over different things, and I think I've been a bridge builder in helping people negotiate and come to a common agreement on things.
Thank you, Mr. Baskerville. Ms. Sultan, three minutes. You did allude to your profession in your opening statement, but if you could elaborate on that, tell the readers what you do for a living and how you think that experience will help you as a school board member if you are elected. Three minutes.
Absolutely. I love this question because I really like my job a lot. I am a pediatrician by training. I did my residency in pediatrics. And then I did three years of an emergency medicine fellowship. So as a physician, I work part of my time or part of my week in the emergency department at Children's Healthcare of Atlanta. I spend about 80% of my time at the Eggleston Campus, and then about another 20% downtown at the Grady Campus. I'm actually leaving to go to work as soon as we finish here, actually. So I spend all day, every day, taking care of children, assessing their needs, figuring out what their families need, and putting all of those needs into solutions. I'm skilled at taking care of children, understanding how they develop, understanding their developmental and educational needs. I've spent my entire life learning about children. They're my passion. They're what I do best. They're what I enjoy. And I've been happy to dedicate my entire career to the service of children. Now, in addition to that, I'm also the medical director for the sedation team at the Eggleston Campus. So I run a team of physicians and of nurses. Within that job, I have a number of leadership roles across the CHOA system. I'm responsible for my division's budget. I'm responsible for salaries of my physicians. I'm responsible for recruiting and hiring, in addition to managing multiple teams with people with multiple skills. So I think that all of those things set me apart and are a huge advantage to the school board. I do not think that there has been a school board member with a medical background in the recent past. And I think that that balance of medical expertise and scientific literacy will enhance the board and enhance our decision-making. I'm also, I work with COVID patients every day. I think that it is no secret that the COVID virus is here with us and is here to stay. I interpret medical knowledge, such as CDC guidance, guidance from the American Academy of Pediatrics. I do this every day, all day. And I think that that is a huge advantage to the district, and I would be a huge aspect, asset to the board in that aspect.
Thank you, Carmen Sultan. So we're going to start the next question with you again, Carmen Sultan. What is your plan for addressing the racial academic achievement gap in City Schools of Decatur? Three minutes.
Perfect. So thanks for that question. I have had the opportunity and the pleasure of serving multiple organizations throughout the city and within the City Schools of Decatur. I think that it's critical to understand that issues related to racial inequity, both at the educational level and all the way up to the administrative level are, is an issue that we need to tackle quickly. I volunteer my time with the Black Parent Alliance. I've created a 501(c)(3) with a team of other parents to advocate for the educational needs and the social needs of children of color throughout the district. Every day, I do one or two things or spend a portion of my time advocating for these issues. And I'm very happy to take that passion and that advocacy to the board. Specifically, I think there are a couple of things that we will have to work closely with the superintendent to get into place. The first one is taking a very critical look at our curriculum and then addressing any holes or inaccuracies that relate to other cultures and other races. We have to get that corrected so that our curriculum is, is in line with history and English. In addition to that, I think we need to also continue to look at discipline disparities with regards to race, both at the renful level up to the high school level. We need to keep a careful track on that data and make sure that we are addressing any issues that are related to race specifically. The last thing, which I think is the most, one of the more important things, is to have robust and ongoing bias training for our teachers, for our staff, for our administrators. Recognizing biases and how they present is important. I also think that correcting those biases is a lifelong skill. And I think having a program in place so that our teachers feel supported, so that they feel like they're learning and that this training is ongoing is also critical. I do this work at the School of Medicine, and I'm happy to assist the board and work closely with the educational director and the equity director to make sure that we get these things done.
Dan Baskerville, same question to you, three minutes. What is your plan for addressing the racial and academic achievement gap in City Schools of Decatur? You have to unmute your microphone, Mr. Baskerville. I'm sorry.
There we go. So I, you know, a lot of things Dr. Sultan said are things that I, you know, agree with and would be my approach. I think we need to work with the Office of Equity and Student Services to provide the resources to administrators and teachers to innovate and replicate the practices that get results. Because, I mean, things are not where they should be, but you know, there are things that do work, and I think we need to make sure those are replicated. But I think one of the big issues, and it's, is reevaluating our curriculum and our instructional methods to ensure the diverse population we have in Decatur schools is equally receiving a free and appropriate public education. You know, there are, as Dr. Sultan mentioned, it's, you know, it's, there's a lot of different groups in Decatur. It's very diverse. It's not just black and white. There are, there's a significant number of Asian students, Hispanic students, students that are of mixed-race backgrounds. We need to make sure that we are addressing all these populations. And the other thing is the disciplinary, is to make sure that we're rendering any disciplinary actions on our students, regardless of their race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, and gender. And when I am crafting, you know, these solutions, if I'm elected to the board, I will continue to listen, as I have during this campaign with people I've talked to, to those who have historically suffered discrimination, to better understand their perspective, rather than just to impose my own opinion. Because as, you know, anybody can see on the Zoom call, I am, I am not a minority. So, you know, I need to learn. I mean, I think I already know a lot, but I will continue to learn and to listen. And a couple of other things. Now, I was, I've looked through all the policies the district has on equity, and you know, all the schools have equity committees that do reports, and that's great. I mean, the district really says a lot of the right things in writing, but I don't know, we certainly have not come far enough in implementing them, and I'm not, and we really got to get the results. I mean, it's one thing to say all these things on paper. It's another thing to implement them and get results. I was looking through one of the schools.
Nine seconds, Mr. Baskerville.
Ten seconds?
Yeah.
And looking at, looking at some, the results of students in math, English, and everything, and I think it was comparison between black and white students. And it was just outrageous, the below-grade level for the minority students compared to the white students.
Thank you. The next question, we're going to start with you, Dan Baskerville. What is your opinion about CSD's current spending priorities? And what changes would you make to CSD's budget, if any? Three minutes.
Um. I think that one thing that really needs to be looked at is the, the budget spending on the central administration. What are, what are the priorities we are spending the money on? And can we, are there, you know, do we have the right people in there? Do we have too many people? Do we not have enough people? I, I think, just looking at things on paper, it can be a little difficult to make pronouncements about what needs to change in the school budget. I mean, I know what the priorities need to be. The priorities need to be, you know, addressing the learning needs of all the students. And are we putting resources and things that are taking away from that? Are we taking, you know, for example, the amount of lawsuits that the, that the school district is getting into? Can we, you know, work with the people? Can we, you know, work with the people who have issues with the school system before we get into these lawsuits? I mean, I think if you talk to the people that have sued the district, maybe if the district listened to them a little bit more, maybe we wouldn't have gotten into these costly things. And there's a bunch of revenue that could be used toward spending on students.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Carmen Sultan, three minutes. What is your opinion about CSD's current spending priorities? And if you are elected, would you make any changes to CSD's budget and why?
Right. Thank you for that. I think here's the thing. We have to continue to understand that the school budget is a significant, if not the largest component of the city's budget. So making sure that we're looking critically at details and how we're spending, I think is hugely important. I think that the other important issue is that our budget is our value statement. So we, what we spend on is what we value. So I think it should reflect the objectives and the goals of the superintendent, of the teachers, of the staff. So we should put our money where our mouths are and spend on the things that we need to spend on. So how do we do that? I think it's important to look critically at where the most waste is and see how we can reallocate funds. If there is too much money in one pot, we should shift it to another and then make sure that the programs that kids need, the support that the teachers need, all of those things are accounted for. I think a budget that is not well balanced, that's not well explained, leads to people feeling like they're paying too much in taxes. I think that's where the board can improve, is making sure that the budget is clear, that it's understood and that taxpayers know what they're getting for their money. So I think that there are a couple of areas that we could target. If you look and track data over time, we can see where we're overspending, where we're underspending and where we need to shift money around. So I think that takes looking at multiple years of budgets. For example, things like maintenance and operations. Is there money that could come out of there and go into teacher training, go into early intervention services? But I think that's a cooperative effort between the school board and the superintendent so that the objectives of our budget reflect our ultimate goals, which is to invest in our students and to invest in our teachers.
Thank you. We're going to start this next question with Carmen Sultan. Ms. Sultan, the school board next year will be searching for a permanent replacement for Superintendent David Duty. What is your ideal candidate for this position? Three minutes.
Perfect. I am, I've had the, the pleasure in my current job of interviewing, recruiting, hiring new talent, looking for new physicians. And I feel like it's a very exciting time for a, a business or a, a school system or a division. It's a way that you can grow. I think specifically looking at the superintendent, there are a couple of things that I would be looking for. One of the top priorities is finding someone who has some educational experience. I think it's important that we have a leader that has come up through the classroom so they understand the perspectives of our educators and our teachers. They've had those boots on the ground in the classroom and they know how to get things done. I think the other, one of the other things I would be looking for, qualities that I would be looking for in a superintendent is making sure that they're a strong team leader. I think our superintendent should be accessible. They should be willing to take feedback and skilled at giving feedback. So someone who can manage multiple teams, who can manage a cabinet, I think is also important. The last thing, as we just talked about previously, is having a superintendent who is cognizant of how we're spending our money, where our money is going and how our budget looks. Like I said, it's important that our budget reflects our objectives and those translate into goals. And I think that having a superintendent who has had success in that regard is also important.
Thank you. Dan Baskerville, what is your ideal candidate to be City Schools of Decatur's next superintendent? Three minutes, sir.
So really, three things. One, be fully invested in improving the infrastructure of our curriculum and instruction and the continuous teacher training to master proven strategies. Two, be knowledgeable in fiscal management, especially as it relates to federal funds received by the district in accordance with policy and federal law. And three, be well experienced in strategic organizational climate and culture innovation as it is the, really the driving force behind employee behaviors and relations that deeply impact the retention of our faculty, staff and families in our school community. And finally, they should have a demonstrated history of transparency and success. I, I think, you know, that's something that people have been concerned about with the previous superintendent. And, you know, we, we, and people are really going to want somebody who has, you know, some demonstrated success and is going to be transparent. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baskerville. I have a specific question for you and I will give Carmen Sultan a second to respond, but we're getting some questions about this on Twitch. I had a question and I'm going to jump ahead. You currently work as a lobbyist for the DeKalb County School District, which you have been transparent and upfront about from the beginning. In your interviews with us, you say you will not work on any matters with the DeKalb School District adverse to City Schools of Decatur. My question reading that is, can you tell us what matters you would consider to be adverse to City Schools of Decatur? And do you know who would be responsible for determining which matters rise to the level of being adverse to the City Schools of Decatur? I'll let you have three minutes for that, sir.
Okay. The only issue I know that has been adverse between the two school systems was the annexation issue. And that was one where an agreement was reached between City Schools of Decatur and DeKalb County Schools this year. As you know, from the coverage, there was a joint press conference between the leaders of the Decatur School Board, the mayor of the city of Decatur and DeKalb County Schools and CEO Michael Thurman of DeKalb County, all saying that this was a historic success. So hopefully, the people who are in office right now view that as, you know, not an issue. They view it as something where they came to a common agreement on. However, you know, that was an issue that has been contentious in the past. So what I would pledge is I would not work for DeKalb County Schools in any way whatsoever on the annexation issue anymore. I, to get rid of any sort of perception of, of conflict or anything, you know, if it has to, if I'm elected to the board, I will not do that. I mean, if there, if it has to go back for renegotiation, if there are discussions about it, I will not work on that at all for DeKalb County Schools. I will be a City of Decatur School Board member. That is, will be my role. And there will not be anything that I do for DeKalb County Schools in relation to that, period, the end. And if there's a document I need to sign or whatever, I'm happy to do it. There are ethics and conflict laws that govern the City of Decatur Schools and people can look at them in great depth. There's penalties for violating them. So both those things will keep me from doing it. But I am, if I get elected, I am here to represent City of Decatur Schools and nothing in conflict with that.
Carmen Sultan, do you, do you want to respond to that briefly?
Yeah, I would love to. I think a couple of things I would like to point out. The first thing is that annexation has been a, an ongoing concern and an ongoing topic between the City Schools of Decatur and DeKalb County since I lived here as a kid, since I was at DeKalb County. So I think voters need to understand that the issue of annexation is not going away. And it can definitely, while it may not be at the front of our decision-making right now, it is not an issue that is going to be resolved completely. I think the other thing to realize is that while my opponent could have earlier on decided to recuse himself from issues involving DeKalb County Schools, he chose to keep his employer, which I think is understandable. However, that creates a significant conflict and a significant bias. If you can sign documentation that says you don't have a conflict of interest, what you cannot do is eliminate bias. So I think the voters need to understand that and understand that I am free of all of these conflicts of interest. I have no issues with bias. I'm committed to voting objectively, transparently and only in the best interest of the community and the kids.
Want to give Dan Baskerville a chance to respond to that. Also, Zoe Seiler, who is our education reporter, asks, you know, is there anything besides annexation that would be adverse to City Schools of Decatur? So Mr. Baskerville, I give you three minutes to respond, sir.
Sure. Yeah, I, I mean, you know, there are plenty of people who have, have professional jobs out there that have, have to recuse themselves at board meetings. There is members of City of Decatur School Board that have had to recuse themselves over certain matters. If Dr. Sultan, you know, had a relationship with, you know, a testing company or something that wanted to do COVID testing, she may have to recuse herself on something like that. But, you know, it's, I think that I have proved that I have no bias for the, for the kids of the City of Decatur Schools. They are always at my, at the forefront of my thoughts. And I would not have been the PTO and the PTA co-president at either of those schools if I wasn't totally invested in this community and the kids in this community. At Tally Street, before it opened, I helped a group of parents and I was a part of the PTO at Fabe, but I got involved in it because they asked me because of my experience with green space at, at Fabe to help them lobby for more. The superintendent and the facilities director that were being unresponsive to them to trying to get more green space for people at Tally. And I jumped right in, spent my personal time doing that because it was going to help kids in the City of Decatur. And I do, there is no way that I'm going to let any outside of forces affect my way of thinking on that. And, you know, it's, she really hasn't, if we want to have a discussion on annexation, we could because people don't really understand it. And I'm afraid that what Dr. Sultan says about it is not really quite correct. The annexation issue has been between the City of Decatur and DeKalb County. The schools don't even have a say in annexations. But, you know, we, we talk about equity. This, this issue was all about equity and kids in DeKalb County Schools who, you know, 73% of the kids there get free and reduced lunch. And, you know, it was about equity for some of those children. So, I mean, you know, we, if we really want to talk about the annexation issue, let's talk about the equity of the issue too. But the bottom line is, is I do not have any conflicts on this issue. And I will, and I think to get to your question, because I think you asked about other issues for DeKalb County Schools. I mean, I usually work with the Georgia School Board Association a lot on issues that are important to all schools, like getting more funding for QBE. You know, these are issues that all schools want to work on. Decatur Schools and DeKalb Schools should be working together on most issues. I mean, this is one community. Decatur is part of DeKalb. We need to be working with DeKalb County Schools on that.
Thank you. Let's move on to a different topic. We'll start with Carmen Sultan. And this is actually pertains to something you both said in your Q and A, so I wanted to touch on it. Carmen Sultan, in your Q and A and in Dan Baskerville's Q and A, you both mentioned that you knew families that are leaving City Schools of Decatur. We're actually seeing that reflected in our enrollment projections as well. What have these families told you about why they are leaving the district? And if you're elected, what do you intend to do about it? Three minutes, we'll start with Carmen Sultan.
So I, you know, I have, I have had the, the pleasure of getting to know a lot of families within the district who have and share that same concern. Every day I talk to at least one or two people that are interested in telling me their stories and interested in telling me their perspective. I think that in knowing families who have pulled their children out of the district, there could be a variety of reasons. I feel like the number one consistent reason is that they feel like their kids are not getting the educational support and their educational needs are not being met by the district. And I find that heartbreaking. I think that the school district can do better to provide the, the free and equitable and fair education that all of our children deserve. So I talked to one mom maybe about a week or so ago whose daughter has special educational needs. She had to fight to get an IEP. She had to push to get that IEP through. And ultimately, to me, she just sounded exhausted. It had taken months to get the services that she needed and she continued to have to go back and fight and advocate. And like many issues related to equity, she sounded exhausted. And the interesting thing about this family was that she still had her daughter in the district. So I asked her, I said, well, what would make you keep her here? Rather than saying, why are you leaving? Why would you stay? And she said, if my kid's happy, then I'm happy. If she gets what she needs in the classroom and she comes home and she's happy, then I feel like she's getting what she needs. So I think that is what we have to work towards, is making sure that all of our kids are getting what they need in the classroom, that they feel welcomed, regardless of their educational needs, regardless of their race, their gender identification, any of those things that they feel welcomed in the district, that they're getting the education that they need and they come home happy.
Dan Baskerville, same question to you, three minutes. You mentioned in your Q and A that families have told you they're leaving the district. What are they telling you about why they're leaving the district and what are you going to do about it if you're elected?
Yeah, and this is really, you know, a very big issue for me. It's really one of the reasons that I was interested in running four years ago and continues to be, you know. And it's not a problem in my family. I don't, you know, my son is, is fine. But when his best friend, when a kid on his baseball team a few years ago, when they were lea- leaving the district, I'm like, why are they leaving the district? I, I, you know, I've known these kids for a long time. And, and my, you know, my neighbor now, her daughter was going to go into sixth grade. And, you know, these are not kids that you're like, why, why, they have learning challenges? They're atypical learners? You certainly can't identify that by, by looking at them. And, I mean, I don't know that you can identify anybody by looking at them and say that. But you, you know, it's just, people are leaving because their kids are these atypical learners and they're falling through the cracks. They're just not, it's hard to get the IEP like Dr. Sultan said. And some of them don't even qualify for, and then they're just left to struggle in the schools. They're just not getting the help that they need. So they're not qualifying for the programs and then they're left to struggle. And their parents, the parents I know of these children, I know them well, and they've advocated for their children. They're not shrinking violets. And they're just not getting, you know, really any response from the school that's satisfactory. And they just try and they try and they just throw their hands up at the end of the day and say, forget about it. We want, we're public, we're fans of public education. We want to stay in the school system. We can't afford to do this, but our kids are more important. So we just, we, we need to go to a, a private school. There's other parents that I've talked to that they don't want to leave the school system. Their kids may be doing a little better, so they're, they're getting private tutoring for them or spending money on that. And, you know, this shouldn't be happening. And so what I think needs to be done is we need to have an advisory committee similar to what they did for the senior homestead exemption, all this, though this is a much more complex issue, and have experts who can really do a deep dive on this issue, why people are leaving. But not just that issue. Let's look at, let's look at all the learners who are struggling, whether they be.
I'm going to stop you right there because actually our next question kind of bleeds into that and you were going to get the first response anyway. So the next question comes from a reader and the reader asks, if you are elected, what will you do to help students and families that have special needs and individualized education plans? So I'll give you three minutes on that, Dan Baskerville.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll just, I won't need three minutes probably on that, so I'll finish what I was saying. Another thing is, yeah, creating this and bringing in experts for an advisory committee to look in to the curriculum, to the instruction we're providing, to how we're onboarding teachers, kind of a big wholesome look at the system. And atypical learners, struggling learners, you know, let's look at them all and figure out if there is a better way to, to address it with the curriculum, the instructional process. is a better way to, to address it with the curriculum, the instructional process. Um, so to your question, um, can you repeat it for me again?
Yeah, it's from, it's from a reader. Uh, the reader asks, if you are elected, what will you do to help students and families who have special needs and individualized education plans? You've got about two minutes left, sir.
Okay. Uh, well, one idea I propose for that is, uh, to have the board partner with, uh, CSD's Director of Curriculum and Instruction, CSD's Director of Special Ed, and CSD's Director of Student Support, who all have a role in addressing this issue, um, to determine the best ways in which we can work together to, to re-engineer our curriculum and instruction, which is kind of what I was saying with, uh, the question before. And make sure our programs and processes that they have are both appropriate and inclusive of all of our learners. So when I talked about this, um, establishing this advisory committee, you know, it's for all, you know, gifted, it, or for all the students I mentioned. And it also wouldn't include gifted, gifted, which is students that have special needs and, and students who are in the top percentage, um, of the learners too, who are really labeled as gifted as well. Um, I know it sounds like a lot on the plate for some committee like that, but I think you can break it down. And I think you have to look at the system as a whole, uh, to really address everything.
Thank you. Uh, Carmen Sultan, three minutes, a reader's question. If you are elected, what will you do to help students and families who have special needs and individualized education plans? Three minutes.
Perfect. Um, I think, um, a couple of things that I would like to focus on is making sure that our kids who have different learning needs, if they have, uh, special learning accommodations, or if they're in the, the top 10% and they are gifted, the key to this is early intervention, right? So this means identifying these children early on, getting those services in place early on, and making sure that it's consistent across the entire, their entire educational experience. I think that starts as early as the pre-K three to pre-K four level. So if we go back a couple of questions, this should be a line item in our budget, making sure that we have some monetary funds to make sure that there are early intervention specialists who are well-trained, that they, that they know who they can report to for, you know, for the needs of our children. That starts very early, as early as college heights. The second part to that question is that we need to make sure that early educational experiences, again, from age two to four, are available for all of our residents, that it's easy to get to, that it's accessible. So I had a, a meeting with, uh, some leaders from the Decatur Housing Authority, and one of their biggest concerns was that their children do not have access to college heights. So they do not have access to the same level of early intervention and early pre-K services and early toddler age educational services that other children in the district have. And I think that's something that we have to work on. Another thing is making sure that our teachers are well-trained. Every child has different needs. All children aren't built the same, but making sure that our teachers feel supported, that they're trained early on in their educational career, and that that training continues as they are, as they stay with us in the district is also important. I think the other thing is that we need to look at how our kids are getting IEPs. Are they getting our, their IEPs through the school district and through the state? Or are they getting them through private sources like private psychologists? And making sure that we are closing some of those socioeconomic, uh, equity gaps, so that all kids, regardless of what they can afford, whether they have access to a psychologist, or they are using the school system, the free and fair school system to get those special services, we identify them early, we support them until high school, and we make sure our teachers are comfortable being trained in these endeavors.
Thank you. Uh, so the next question, we're going to start with, uh, Carmen Sultan. Uh, and the question is, because of the issues surrounding the previous superintendent, many people in the Decatur community have questioned the actions of the school board. If you were elected, what will you do to repair the school board's relationship with the community it serves? Three minutes.
I think that I, I worked, uh, in, in some of my volunteer work very hard and advocated very publicly for some, for transparency on behalf of the school board to our taxpayers and to our parents. Um, I was very vocal about making sure that our, our, our taxpayers got the closure that they needed. I will say that it is important that the school board is transparent in where they stand and how they vote to the greatest extent possible by the law. So we should not do anything that puts the school district in any jeopardy, but we should give our parents the, the equitable and the fair understanding of how the school board functions. A couple of ways that we can do that. We can make sure that taxpayers, parents, voters are clear on where we stand on issues. We could do a better job of replying to parent concerns. So by email or by public comment in school board meetings, and making sure that the, the teachers, the staff, the parents realize that the school board is there to work for them, not to work for each other, to function as a team. But ultimately, our goal is to work for the taxpayers.
Thank you. Uh, Dan Baskerville, same question to you, sir. Uh, because of issues surrounding the previous superintendent, many in the community have questioned the actions of the Decatur School Board. If you were elected, what will you do to repair the school board's relationship with the community that it serves? Three minutes, sir.
I think it is all about communication and transparency, um, in the school board meetings and out of the school board meetings and in the school board meetings. Um, you know, there is public comments, and then that's kind of the end of it. You don't get a response. And some comments are just comments, but some are, you know, questions that would help if they were addressed in the meeting. And, you know, there's been a longstanding policy of not responding, um, to people's comments as they're commenting. And I think that's, that's fine. But I think there should be a place where that can happen. Um, you know, some boards, uh, have a time at the end where, uh, board members can make a personal comment. And if we had something like that, I would do my best to try to give my opinion on maybe what some people did in public comments. Although sometimes board meetings go very long and people might not want to stay up for that, but they could at least see it on a recording. Uh, another thing is, I think there needs to be more robust discussion during the board meetings about, um, policies and especially, um, how policies are being implemented. Sometimes it doesn't seem, you know, the superintendent kind of presents stuff, but then there's not a really a robust discussion. And I think that would add the transparency and information that people, um, in the community are looking for. And then outside of the board, you know, I, uh, you know, nothing against social media because that's, you know, that's how you, uh, earn a living with all the online stuff, Dan. But I, uh, you know, I don't really like to debate very much with people on, uh, on Facebook or anything, but I am happy to talk to anybody who has questions if I get elected to the board or now via phone, via email, in person, via Zoom, and just, you know, and answer their questions. I mean, the school board has a, you don't want to be too much in the weeds overseeing the superintendent and the administrators, but you do want to be responsive. And I promise that I will be extremely responsive to all the voters in Decatur.
Thank you. And a point of clarification, you're not offending me. Social media is a dumpster fire, uh, and I hate it too. So we're, I think we're all in agreement there. Uh, I'm going to start the next question with you, sir. Uh, given the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, do you think the school district should consider returning to virtual instruction? And at what point, if not, at what point would you imagine that would happen? Or at what point would you consider adjusting the school district's mitigation strategies, uh, to relax some measures like social distancing and masking? Three minutes, sir.
Okay. Yeah. And if I don't get all of them, tell me I missed one. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I don't right now foresee any way going back to all virtual. I, I mean, the only way I could possibly see that is if there was some new variant that the vaccines didn't work on at all, and we were back to, back to ground zero. But I think with people being vaccinated, especially with, uh, there being a vaccine mandate for the teachers now, and I know the board is considering one for students, I believe tomorrow night, and the, the mitigation strategies that they have in place, you know, at the beginning of the pandemic, you know, nobody knew how to address it. Nobody knew how to really handle it. But I think they've done a good job this year at the schools with testing, with the mandatory masks. Um, I think they've done a good job. You can especially see that in comparison to some surrounding school districts that have not had, that have had definitely higher numbers than us. Um, but you do need a robust virtual, um, platform in place for those who don't want to go back. If your children are under 12 and they have not been vaccinated, or for other reasons they're not vaccinated, people are nervous about sending their kids back and, and rightly so. I probably would be. My son is 13. He's vaccinated. But if he was 11 and not able to get vaccinated, I would have had to, you know, think about it harder. I've heard mixed reviews of Decatur's Virtual Academy. But if we're going to do, offer a virtual option, it needs to be good. It, it can't be less than what people are getting in person. But I, you know, I strongly believe in keeping in-person, safe in-person with strong mitigation strategies. Cause I know for a lot of children, it was like a lost year and that can't, that can't happen again. So I, I don't really see a scenario necessarily right now where we would go back to all virtual, or that would be something I would support. But you never know in this world with crazy viruses what happens. So, but yeah, I mean, my position is, is in-person with a virtual option for those who are not comfortable getting vaccinated or going back in person.
Real quick follow-up to that, 30 seconds. Do you support a vaccine mandate, uh, for all staff and students?
I do support a vaccine mandate for all staff with the caveat that if there are, you know, and they'd have to define it like religious beliefs or health conditions that don't allow people to get vaccinated, that there is some way to set up a program where those people are tested regularly if they're going to be in school. But generally, I do support a vaccine mandate for the teachers. For students, uh, you know, I guess we're talking about 16 and over and 12 to 15. Um, yes, for 16 and over, for 12 and 15, that has not been approved by the FDA yet. It's only authorization, not fully approved. So that has to be discussed because I, I mean, that's a different situation between, for some people, with the FDA approval and the non-FDA approval. And that's what the 12 and 15 years fall into.
Thank you. Uh, Carmen Sultan, I'll give you three minutes, 30 on that, since that question went a little over. Uh, but the question, uh, is, given the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, do you think the school district should continue returning to virtual instruction? And if not now, at what point would you imagine that would happen? And at what point would you consider adjusting the mitigation strategies to relax measures such as, uh, social distancing and masking? And also, do you support a vaccine mandate? Three, three minutes and 30 seconds.
Um, first, first thing is that I work in the pediatric emergency department. I see COVID patients every day. I see some with mild disease. I see kids who are so critically ill, I'm sending them to the ICU. So the first thing I want to impart on our families is that COVID is here with us. Um, we are tired of it, but it is not tired of us. So we have to keep our foot on the gas of making sure that we are keeping these mitigation strategies in place to keep our students safe, to keep our teachers safe, our staff, the bus drivers, the custodians, all of those people. We work as a team, and then we will find our way out of this. I think what I've learned from dealing with COVID for far longer than I would like is that this is a virus that is smart. Uh, that's what it does, is that it mutates to keep itself going. So I think we have to be flexible. We have to be understanding. And most importantly, we have to make sure that we are following the, the guided instruction from the American Academy of Pediatrics, from the Centers for Disease Control, interpreting their findings and applying it to our district. What works for City of Decatur may not work for Clayton County Schools or DeKalb County Schools, but we need to keep our eye on that data, track it over time, and then make sure that we are consulting with specialists, people who are experts in their field, to create a plan that keeps our kids in the school building. There is no substitute for in-person learning. I think we've learned that. And my goal is to keep our, our schools open and safe, but those two, and those two things can coexist. I think it's hard to know what would make us swivel back to shutting down schools. I think there are a couple of factors that I look at when I'm looking at risk assessment. Um, how many positive cases have we had over the past week or two weeks or the past month? What is our vaccination rate? That includes vaccination rate of the teachers and staff, which is quite high, of the students, and then of the community. We have to put all those pieces together and then we can help modify, we can figure out how to modify mitigation strategies. I think it's a complex puzzle. I think the parts are always moving. I think that the important thing too is to realize that the board is always trying to act in the best interests of our children. And this is an ongoing virus with ongoing medical and clinical implications. I see it all the time. Um, and I think that to bridge into your last question, the vaccine is our way out of this. Um, free and accessible testing for symptomatic students is also a way to decrease spread within our schools. I think as parents, we would all love it if we didn't continuously get emails about an exposure. I'm sure there are parents who've had to put their kids in quarantine. So making sure that we can get our vaccination rate up as high as we can get within this community is, is critical. I cannot emphasize it enough.
And we, we have about 30 seconds left. This is the vaccine mandates. You do support them for student staff? Yes?
I do absolutely. I a hundred percent support a vaccine mandate. I think we've been doing vaccines for years. Um, and like I said, the way out of this is to make sure that we have as high of a vaccine rate as possible. I think that, um, if you have a religious or a medical exemption, that's understandable. But for all healthy students, especially for healthy teachers, we should be getting that vaccine.
Thank you. So we are approaching the end of our forum. I think we've got time for one more question, three minutes apiece, if that's okay. And then we're going to move to our, uh, closing statements. So since we started with Dan Baskerville in the last question, we're going to start with Carmen Sultan on this question. Three minutes. Um, some concerns have been raised at previous school board meetings about the district's Spanish program and the amount of times two, students are taught the language. Do you think the level of instruction is adequate? Or do you think it should be adjusted? Three minutes.
I think that's, I think that's a very interesting question. I think that if we continue to decrease the amount of time that our children spend exposed to foreign languages, we can't expect that they have significant foreign language skills by the time they get to middle school or high school. It's the same with any skill. I think that there is definitely a, a concern if students are only getting instruction once or, you know, twice a week for 30 minutes each. Um, my youngest girl loves her Spanish teacher. She loves Spanish class, and I think she would probably go every day if we let her. But I think it's, it's important that if one of our values is to make sure that our kids have exposure to other cultures and other languages, that we continue to provide them that instruction.
Okay. Uh, Dan Baskerville, uh, three minutes. Uh, some concerns have been raised at previous school board meetings about the district's Spanish program and the amount of time students are taught the language. Do you think the level of instruction is adequate? Or should it be adjusted? Three minutes, sir.
You know, I, I think that is something to be looked at and decide what the priorities of the district are. I think it's important to have languages and start them as early as possible. And I think that is something that needs to be balanced with the other instructional and learning challenges that we have in the district, and where do we best put our resources? I mean, I would like it to continue and increase if possible. I, I mean, one thing is, is, you know, they have, offer the Spanish there, and then you can go to Spanish or French once you get to middle school. So, you know, how, how are we balancing that? Um, you know, my, my son would love it if they taught Japanese in school, but you know, that's, we unlikely have the resources to expand languages. But I think we should look at the language program. I think, you know, Spanish is probably the most important one because we have the most, you know, Spanish-speaking students in the district as compared to those other ones. So that's why it is so, that's why it's so important. But I, you know, I, I think I would need to look at that more, but it's definitely an issue of importance to me.
Thank you. And, um, that concludes the Q and A portion of our forum. Uh, I do want to thank all 37, 40 people who've been hanging out with us, watching these questions. I do want to let you know, if you're just jumping in, we will be uploading this forum to the Decaturish YouTube channel. We'll post that on our website later, uh, so you can check that out. Uh, so now we're going to move into closing statements. Each of you will get, uh, three minutes, and we're going to start with, uh, Dan Baskerville. Uh, three minutes to make a closing statement, sir.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you. I want to thank both you and for hosting this and Dr. Salton for a constructive discussion. I think this is, you know, good for Decatur, good for City of Decatur School Board. You know, there's two other school board seats up for election, but unfortunately, nobody chose to run in those, so this is the only place really for a discussion to happen. So I hope, you know, everybody will listen, including them, as, you know, tonight people have asked a lot of really good questions. And, you know, I'm hoping that the other school board members are focusing on this, on this as well. And I, I just want to mention a couple of issues that didn't come up tonight before I close out, that are important to me. One is, everybody remember that the senior homestead tax exemption is on the ballot with us in November. It's very important if you want to support our seniors to extend that tax exemption. It's for another two years at the moment. And we can see if it financially works better than in the last one, which, you know, didn't have a means test or anything, and cost the district a lot more money than they expected. But we don't want, but we need to put that in place. We need it for the seniors, so please support that. I definitely support that. Another thing we didn't talk about tonight is sports indicator. You know, the lack of sports field for the baseball team, which is a, you know, a team that is highly touted in Georgia. Our football team at the high school is doing great now. And, you know, I, I want to see more support for the sports teams from the board. Environmental issues. You know, I want to see us make sure we're working with the city on environmental issues and infrastructure issues. I think there's to be a better recycling program at the schools. Over a tally, I've been told by some people, there's a horrible parking issue, and there's no sidewalks on Shadow Moore Drive. So that, that, there's a big issue with, for that. So, you know, it couldn't seem like a small issue, but a big issue for people. And I know I'm probably getting low on time, so I just, you know, want to finish by saying that I will be a transparent, responsive school board member that will work hard for you every day, and especially the children of Decatur. The children have a lot of great things to say, and one of the things I'd love to do as a school board member is go into the schools and talk to them, and hopefully inspire them. You know, if I went in there now, they probably wouldn't be as excited to talk to me as if I was a school board member. But I love talking to kids, love hearing their ideas. That's really why I'm doing this. But I want to implement things. I just don't want to, you know, run and say things. I will get things done if you like. Thank you.
Thank you. Carmen Salton, closing statement, three minutes.
Thank you. I just want to start out by thanking all of the viewers for their time. Thanking you, Dan, for moderating, and Dan Basherville for engaging in this very productive discussion. I think it's been a good use of everyone's time. I want to remind everyone to vote. Your vote is your voice. It's how you can make change. Early voting starts over 12th. Election Day is in November, so please get out, take the time to vote. I think that I have shown or proven here that I'm dedicated to this job. I spend countless hours volunteering for multiple organizations in the community, in the city, within the school system. It's, it's part of my passion and what I, what I do. I've dedicated my entire life to children, understanding them, talking to them, taking care of them when they're at their worst or at their best. And I, I intend to bring that passion, that knowledge, that understanding to the school board level. I think it's important that we understand that I am free of all biases and conflicts. I pledge to be a transparent and responsive board member. I spend multiple hours out of the week talking to voters and taxpayers who email me, and they have a question or they have a concern, and I enjoy talking to them. I feel like the more people I talk to, the more perspective I have, kids, adults, kid, folks without kids in the district, any of those things. So I am dedicated to the community. I've been here my entire life. I'm a native Atlantan. And I've watched the city grow. I've watched the community grow and change, and I'm committed to making impactful change in the school district. Again, I appreciate everyone's time. I would appreciate your vote. I am here to work for you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would appreciate it if everybody who enjoyed our forum today, who enjoys all this great local election coverage that we provide, would visit supportmylocalnews.com and consider becoming a financial supporter. You can do that for as little as three bucks a month, and that's what helps us produce things like this, these forums where you get to know your local elections. There's nobody else in Atlanta who is going to be providing this service to y'all. We will. We will continue to do that, thankfully, with your help. I want to thank our candidates, Carmen Salton and Dan Basherville, for joining us. But more importantly, I want to thank them for their interest in public service, especially the school board, which is a thankless job and doesn't pay a whole lot. But it's important, and it, and it's an important part of our community. So I want to thank them both for, for being willing to step up and devote some of their time to making our schools better. This is the Decaturish.com Twitch Show. I am your host, editor and publisher, Dan Wizenhunt. All of our coverage about this election can be found at Decaturishvotes.com. There you will learn that early voting is on October 12th. The actual election itself is going to be on November 2nd. This Wednesday, we are going to be hosting a forum for the mayoral candidates in the city of Tucker. I believe that starts at 6:00 PM. We will be publishing a promotion on TuckerObserver.com soon. If you live in Tucker, or even if you're just interested in Tucker, I hope you will join us then. Have a good night, everybody, and we will see you again on Wednesday. Bye-bye.